And just as a reminder, I said this in the pre-board, but I'll say it for the crowd. I don't care that we're not live yet. Because we're missing two members, we need a supermajority for anything to be carried. That means everyone needs to be unanimous. When you have a five-person board, you need at least three votes for the motion to carry. So that means everyone has to agree for anything to pass tonight.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're ready.
All right, calling the meeting to order. First, let's plan where our fire exits are. This door through my left and the door through which we all came in today. Please stand for public allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call attendance, please?
Member Michael Galavan. Member Paul Spata.
Present.
Member Ken Bernard.
Present.
Member Eric Overholt. Acting Chairman Patrick Delaney.
Here.
Please take notice that the zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of De Pue will hold a public hearing on June 12th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Pre-board meeting begins at 6:30 p.m. in conference room in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, De Pue, New York, to consider the application of Mohammed S. Al-Mohammed for a variance on property located on 231 Terrance Boulevard of Chapter 260, subsection 260-14B1H, to permit him to widen his driveway for more than five feet in front of the principal dwelling as required by the village ordinance. Any and all persons interested in such applications will be heard at this time.
So I do not believe the applicant is here at the moment. Therefore, what I'm going to do is ask for if our code department and our legal department have anything on this, and then I'm going to read the criteria that was submitted by the applicant. And then I will ask for public comment at this time. So do we have anything we want to say right now?
The only thing I would have asked if he had shown up was what type of trailer it is and the size of it. That's from to understand the reason why he wanted to put it out here today. Unfortunately, he's not here to ask, so that's that on our end.
From legal?
I don't have anything other than, obviously, it would be a breach of village code if he were to just put this in front of his house, which is why he's here, requesting relief from the zoning board. And it is in your discretion to grant that relief if you think it's appropriate. Why don't you read through the criteria?
First, I'm going to read through the criteria, and then I'll ask for public comment afterward.
And this is from the applicant's signed petition for variance.
And when I say the criteria, I mean the six criteria for an area variance is part of the application from near state. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? And the applicant wrote, no, we'll make sure it looks nice. Number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? He wrote, no, and I would say that's true. Number three, is the requested area variance substantial? He wrote, yes, and that's accurate. Fourth, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact to physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The applicant wrote, no. Fifth, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning Board of Appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? The applicant wrote, yes, and that's true. Lastly, what is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? And the applicant wrote seventeen feet of relief. And that is...
Yes, that would be about accurate. He wants seventeen feet, and since it can't be there in the first place, seventeen feet would be the reasonable.
Okay. With that all said, I would ask for anyone who'd like to speak on this from the public to step forward and give us your name and address, and then tell us what you'd like to say.
One at a time or a couple at a time, please?
Yes.
We've got to come on up, give us your name and address, just for the record.
I live at 32 Lehigh.
What's your name, sir?
Brian Sales. S-A-Y-L-E-S.
Your wife's name?
Julie. Well, this is the neighbor, Dina.
I'm the neighbor. I'm at 28 Lehigh Court.
I mean, honestly, since this guy has moved in, the yard is atrocious. He parks illegally all the time. The police have numerous complaints against him about his trailers being parked illegally, unregistered. And we're supposed to abide by you hit one and put this driveway in?
May I ask you a question? What type of trailers are they?
They're construction trailers.
One's huge.
Enclosed or are they open?
Yeah, a big enclosed cargo trailer, and then he's got a dump trailer.
The one is huge. I mean, really big.
It's at least thirteen feet tall.
We don't want to picture that one, do we?
No. It's thirteen feet tall. It's got ladders on the roof, and it's dual axle. Yes.
We have a better understanding of what it is than...
Than the open trailer?
A dump trailer.
Is it like the guys who mow the grass?
Yes.
Dump trailers, when it lifts up and dumps.
Oh, okay. So it's a two-wheel dump trailer?
Dual axle dump trailer.
Dual axle, okay.
I mean, it's residential neighborhood, and he wants to turn it commercial.
And his yard now looks like a junkyard anyway. I mean, the weeds are overgrown, the trees are overgrown. I mean, so it already looks terrible in our neighborhood. And with firemen parked across the street, it's a complete eyesore already.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I asked you this or not. What was your name?
Dina.
Dina.
Dina Lato. Sorry.
At what's your address?
28 Lehigh.
Lehigh.
Mine's going to your last name for? Excellent. Thank you.
Construction degree left over from a job he had.
Do you mind if I pass?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
We cut the grass maybe once a month.
Like I said, he's going to have this. If this is his business...
Is this the only, one of the only pictures? Do I, can I swipe?
If he has this business, then he shouldn't, he can't even speak English to begin with. So, no, okay.
Is that the only picture you have?
If he's going to have this as his business, he should be able to have somewhere to put these things.
Lehigh is fantastic. Lehigh, that's where his garage is.
Yeah, I know. I'm familiar with that part.
Yeah.
All right. That's the Lehigh, where the fence is. And then if you run back to the right, that's, one of those is the front yard.
We don't have any of the...
Do you want to come up too?
We have the yard. We don't have the trailer?
No. Do you have a picture of the trailer?
She's got pictures too.
Guys, 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 with all due respect, we want to let everyone be heard, but we have to type up every word that's said here in the meeting minutes. So we try to keep it concise, one at a time. Thank you for sharing this with us. Let's just keep in order to how you're presenting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come up?
Hi. Name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Kristen Whalen, and I live at 237 Terrace Boulevard, which is right next to them.
Mind if I go on your last name for?
W-H-A-L-E-N.
Please continue.
Sure. So I have resided there for 15 years. Previously, at 231 Terrace, it was owned by Max and Flo Shabloski. And they're both now deceased. In August of 2021, the house was sold to Yara Development, Inc., for $250,000. Four months later, it was resold to Mr. Al-Mohaddad, however you say, for $125,000. I believe that this is a commercial business that is being in a residential zone. I've had the taste of the work trailers parked on the front yard several times. Unfortunately, I did have some pictures. Unfortunately, I don't have, there's three of them. I only have a picture of one because I didn't think I needed to keep taking pictures of this stuff. And this was a while ago, too. And I think that the variance is in violation of the residential code and should be denied. And would you guys like to see the pictures that I have?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Start with you.
The first picture is just from Google, which is what it used to look like before they moved in.
Yeah, that's a commercial dump trailer.
And those are just what the house looks like right now. I took them two days ago.
Mind if we keep these for...
You certainly can.
Thank you.
And obviously, I mimic everything that the other neighbors have said. I've never spoken to them. I don't believe that they communicate or speak English, from what I can tell. But nobody, they never approached me, or I don't know nothing about it. And I'm also a little confused because it says the driveway in the frontal part, but there is no driveway.
They're looking to put a driveway, and that's what this is about. So I just want to be clear about something, so for the record.
Please.
Even if you did allow them to put a driveway there today, they still cannot park commercial vehicles there. They'd have to go for a separate variance for that.
Correct.
Okay. Just want everyone to be aware of that.
Okay.
Simply for the placement of the driveway?
So it would only be, they're putting a full driveway in?
That's what their request is, yes.
In the front of the house?
With the car?
All right.
And where in the, where would that driveway be placed? Because I'm right next door.
If you're standing on Terrace, if you're standing in the middle of Terrace looking at that house, it would be to the left of his stoop, to the corner of his house.
So basically, right, almost right to my property line?
It'd be about seven foot from your property line, from what I could tell by the survey. If you'd like to look at it.
Sure.
I think the applicant's...
Applicants are called.
Yep.
Someone tell them to come in. Mr. Mayor, do you mind telling those people to come in? We're hearing their application right now.
So this is where they'd like, this is in front of the house. That's the stoop. That's your property line. And they want to put it in the corner of the house to the... They would have to get a separate variance for that, which they're here now, so...
Are you Mr. Al-Mohaddad?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We're already hearing your application. The meeting started at seven, but we'll give you a chance to be heard. Unfortunately, you missed some of the things your neighbors said. We can try to kind of reiterate those, so you can hopefully address them. But there's concern that you're running a commercial business out of the house, that the yard is not kept up, and that there hasn't been communication with the neighbors about what you're doing there. So that's, that's what we've just heard.
You can come up to the microphone.
You can come up to the microphone.
Do you mind me just translating? My dad doesn't speak much English.
No problem at all. Come on up. And if you don't mind sharing with him what I just said.
Yeah, all right.
We'll need both your names and address for the record, okay?
All right. He was at work. He's sorry for running late. My name is Kafa, and he is Mohammed.
Thank you. All right, so I just proceed as usual.
Yeah, okay. If, if he would like to share why he is applying for the variance and why he wants to put in the driveway and just tell us generally what, why he wants to do this?
All right, so he has, he has his own business, which is construction. So within that, he has two trailers and as well as two vehicles. And they're kind of like, they need a big mass of room. And every time he would try parking, like, down the street or anywhere else, he would get tickets for that. So he's trying to just basically make a solution.
Got it.
All right. So I'm the code enforcement officer, if you don't mind. Even if you were to get this approved today to park in front of the principal dwelling, you're not allowed to keep commercial vehicles in a residential neighborhood. So he still wouldn't be allowed to park a construction trailers in that parking space. I, when we spoke in the office, I wasn't aware, you just said you had a trailer. I wasn't aware that it were construction trailers. So you would need to get a whole nother variance just for that also. So I just want to make that clear, so if you could explain that to us.
He would put his vehicles that he has, because the garageway, where the driveway is, it doesn't really fit.
You couldn't keep them anywhere on the property. It's a residential neighborhood. I just want you to be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
So there was a contention by one of the neighbors that Mr. Al-Mohaddad is, is running a commercial business out of a residential house. And I just wanted to ask him to answer that and kind of, I'd like to hear what he has to say about that contention, basically.
Like, what do you mean?
I mean that, and one of the neighbors who spoke before you guys got here stated that they believe that he's running a commercial business, running a business out of the home. Do you understand what I mean?
Bringing the commercial vehicles home.
That he's operating his business out of the house.
Yeah. He's saying with everything he does with his business or whatever, all the tools and all of the things his construction are in need of are in the garage. And that's why there is no space inside of the garage. And outside of it, he doesn't really come anywhere near the neighborhood, really. He just stays in his space. And that's mainly why he really wants to just make his space bigger and able to just not bother anyone else. And at the same time, like, make it more comfortable for him to run his business, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Fellow board members, Member Menard, any questions for the applicant?
It sounds like a business is being run out of a residential property. It is against the code to run a business out of a residential property in the neighborhood where it is. It is against the code. So parking construction trailers or vehicles is not allowed.
But he's not going to park trailers?
Trailers, trucks, any type of construction vehicle?
Or equipment.
Or equipment cannot be in a residential neighborhood.
He's saying what's wrong with that, like, what's the...
It's against the code in village ordinance. Within our village, it is against the rules.
Don, what provision are you referencing?
I have to look it up. I don't know. In order to do a home-based business, you'd have to apply for it. And a home-based business is usually for, like, hair cutting or babysitting or something.
Right.
Construction yards are not allowed, construction equipment.
But if he's working in a construction business and going to job sites and just has equipment, it might not fit under the specific provision of our code that...
Which I understand, but bringing commercial trucks and trailers home and taking your tools and stuff out of the garage and loading it up every day?
That's a fine line, though.
I think we're, we're going down a rabbit hole when the issue is, should this driveway be permitted in front of the house?
I agree.
If we can move on and don't...
Fair enough.
This problem of a commercial vehicles...
Yeah, we don't need to get bogged down by that, yeah.
I did. My mistake.
It's okay. It's okay. You didn't do anything wrong.
Member Menard, anything further from you?
None from me.
Member Spata?
Going on Terrace Boulevard, there are no other properties that have established what you want to do, which is put a driveway in front of the house that just simply deadens at the house. Your garage is from Lehigh Street on the side, which is behind the house, with a driveway in front of the two-car garage. So there are no other properties on Terrace Boulevard that have established what you want to do.
And is that the problem?
Among others.
It's a concern.
It's a concern. It's a neighborhood concern, and it's against code.
Yeah, it's set of precedents.
But other than our neighborhood, probably not, probably not in that specific place or space, like, you know, throughout the street. But there is a lot of houses that actually have two driveways, and most of them seem like it's a construction-based reasoning why they would have two driveways, because you can just see it visually, based off of the ladders and all the equipment they would have, like...
Do you have any examples, do you have any examples of that?
No, but it's throughout De Pue.
Well, one thing you could do is ask for the board to adjourn this matter, so you can come back and show examples of that. Or you can ask them to vote tonight. It's entirely up to you. But this board is bound by what's been presented to it. There's also been pictures of the yard that have been shown to the board that they've looked at. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, if you have any other questions. I just wanted to lay that out. You could, you don't...
Who wants to explain that?
Yeah. Okay, so he's asking if this is mostly a neighborhood concern is why this idea might be rejected? Like, is it mainly why?
There's a slew of factors that the board goes through. I'm not saying anything's rejected. They don't prejudge issues, and there may be some other members of the community who want to...
Oh, no, I respect their opinions. That's why I'm asking.
But neighbor input is certainly a factor, and we've had three people speak out against this already.
One of many things we take into account, though.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so basically, as for now, is this like towards rejecting?
I don't know. It's up to the board.
Yeah, do we vote? It's not going to be...
We also have to open further public concerns and comments. I don't know if everyone got to speak before you got here.
Okay.
Is there anything else you want the board to know before you sit down?
Okay, he just wants to say that mainly why he really wants to make that other extra space for the driveway and everything. It's not just because of his construction-based places. It's because of just like family comfort. But as for that, he wants to make a whole design in front of the house, like an architecture-type of design in front of the house that will just signify some type of idea based off of his business. So basically, it'll be like an advertisement, I guess, but as well as making the house look better. And as for that, he will for sure respect everyone else's opinions and concerns, and he'd like to hear everyone else, what they say about it.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public... Yes. I'd like to invite any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue to step forward that have not done so already. Is there any other members of the public on this one? No? Okay. So with that being said, one of my fellow board members would like to put forth a motion to grant or deny the variance as presented. Speak now.
I make a motion to deny the variance as proposed.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Member, Member Galavan. Member Spata. Member...
You gotta wait for the vote.
You gotta wait for the vote.
I just wanted to say one thing before we do the vote. Sorry. Just because it's a motion to deny that was made, a yes vote would mean that you are voting in favor of denying this variance as presented. Just make that clear. Please continue.
Okay. Member Galavan. Member Spata.
Yes.
Member Menard.
Yes.
Member Overholt. And Acting Chairman Delaney.
Yes. Voted three to zero in favor of denying the variance as presented.
Did you understand that? The variance was denied.
Okay, next legal notice, please.
Please take notice that the zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of De Pue will hold a public hearing on June 12th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Pre-board meeting begins at 6:30 p.m. in the conference room in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitoba Street, De Pue, New York, to consider the application of Nicholas Kazanowski for a variance on property located on 133 Darwin Drive of Chapter 68, subsection 68-1, to permit him to have chickens on his property as required by the village ordinance. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Okay, can the applicant please step forward? And tell us your name? Maybe want to wait for your name. Give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Nicholas Kazanowski, 133 Darwin Drive, I'm like Julian. I have variance to have chickens on the property.
Okay. You want to tell us anything further about the, about your setup, anything like that?
Just, it's a coop. We have a run coop. It's sixteen and a half, seventeen feet from property line. All the food is stored in a airtight metal container in the garage. Cleaned out once a day. Really, is there anything else?
It's behind our...
Behind our garage, out of sight of everything.
And this, just for the record, this coop has already been constructed. It's already in place?
Yes.
And for the record, the, the waste, how are you dealing with the waste?
It's stored in bags in the garage, and it goes out with the garbage.
It's a way to shop.
Shop back it all out.
Okay. And what is the, the... And what is the, the usage for the chickens, or what's the purpose of keeping the chickens?
Just get fresh eggs, our children love eggs, so, I mean, go through eggs like crazy, so.
Okay, so just personal use?
Just personal use, yep.
Fellow board members, we have questions for the applicant, member Menard?
That answered the majority of my questions right off the top. You said you have six, how many chickens again?
Five.
Five, okay. And no other type of bird?
No.
Just chickens, no ducks, no geese, no anything else?
Ducks in our pool that come every once in a while, but
Well, I get that in my pool too, but you don't, you're not, you don't have any other birds that you are maintaining other than chickens?
No.
Okay. That's all for me, thank you.
I have pictures if you wanna see.
I'm pretty good right now, I think we're, I'm
Member Sprata?
Just for general information, you already have the chickens and the coop built of
Yes, I didn't know we needed a variance.
And you're actually putting the cart in front of the horse?
Yes.
You should have applied for this before you even purchased chickens, but me visiting there, chickens look happy. I mean, if they could smile, I'm sure they were smiling. But, other than that, I don't have any further questions, you answered most of the stuff. You keep the feed in a, in a airtight metal container?
Yep.
So it doesn't attract rodents?
Yep, it's all in the garage, locked up at night.
Uh, what you've built already, the chicken coop and their outside run, that's all chicken wire around it so they have
Yep, they're not free range, yep.
And how many eggs do you get there?
About four or five a day.
Four or five a day? So that's almost one per chicken?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Anything from code on this?
Uh, we still obviously have to come out and inspect it and make sure you meet the requirements. Just know that you have to keep up on it, if we receive complaints, we would have to come out, you'd have to show us, you know, your coop and the way you're keeping and stuff, and at that point, as long as there's no issues, it wouldn't be a problem, but if there was a problem, then it could be reset, okay?
Just understandable.
Sure, okay.
Anything from legal on this?
Nothing from me, that sounds very lucrative, getting four to five eggs a day with the eggs what they cost now, so savvy investment, nothing else.
Okay, anything from the public on this particular application? Yes, please, step forward, give us your name, address.
Hi. My name is Scott Keller, I live at 139 Darwin Drive, which is right next door to the property. All right, good evening and thank you for letting me have a chance to speak tonight. I live right next door to the property in question, I'm here to express my concerns about the request for a zoning variance to allow chickens in our residential neighborhood. I've lived here for 23 years, and I want to highlight that our neighborhood is zoned strictly residential. To my knowledge, no one else in our area currently keeps chickens or other livestock. These zoning laws exist for a reason, to maintain certain standards and expectations for everyone who lives here. When exceptions are made, even for a single property, it can undermine the consistency and fairness that zoning provides the whole community. Now, one of my main concerns is the issue of odor. Chickens produce significant waste, and during the hot and humid months, the smell of urine and droppings can become particularly strong. This isn't just a minor inconvenience. Odors can drift and affect the quality of life for neighbors, especially those living close by like myself. Another issue is the attraction of predators and pests. Chickens can draw on animals such as raccoons and foxes, but most concerning is the risk of attracting rats. Rats are drawn to chicken feed and droppings. Once rats become established, they are extremely difficult to eliminate and quickly become a problem for the entire neighborhood. Now, I'm also concerned about the impact on property values. Most people who buy homes in residential neighborhoods do not expect to be living next to livestock. The presence and especially the smell of chickens could make our neighborhood less appealing to potential buyers and could negatively affect property values for everyone. Granting this variance would set a precedent. If this request is approved, it would be much harder to deny similar requests in the future, which would gradually change the character of our neighborhood. Many residents chose to live here specifically because it is not zoned for livestock, and I believe it's important to respect those choices and consider the broader impact on our community. Now, with that being said, I want to respectfully share some concerns regarding my neighbor's recent actions related to the construction of a chicken coop, specifically in relation to the requirements set forth by the Village of DePue Code. First, the code clearly states, "No person shall breed, raise, harbor, or maintain chickens without a special use permit, subject to the approval of the Village of DePue Zoning Board of Appeals." Despite this, he already built a chicken coop and there's chickens living in there, even though the required permit and zoning variance has not been obtained. And a few specific regulations stand out. Chicken coops must be located at least 15 feet from any property line. Well, I can't measure the exact distance, but it appears to be less than 15 feet from my property line, and the property line extends behind my fence. My fence is inside my property. The code also requires the coops to be suitably screened from the view of surrounding residences by a fence or shrubs. From my patio, I can see it, okay? It's clearly visible, so it doesn't seem to be screened as required. And also, the code says the applicant must notify in person or in writing all property owners within 100 feet that they have applied for special use permit, and inform them of the date and time of the public hearing. I was never contacted by the applicant directly. Instead, I received a letter from Carmy Del Conti, the village code enforcement clerk, just six days ago. My understanding is the applicant, not the village, must notify all property owners within 100 feet, and he must provide evidence that he, his application, that he did so. Village notification does not fulfill this requirement, the letter that I got. In fact, this requirement is highlighted and read on the application. And I would like to see the evidence that was provided showing I was notified. I respectfully ask the board to consider the long-term effects this decision could have on our neighborhood, and I urge you, uphold the current zoning regulations. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward, tell us your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Tara Booth, I live at 44 Linden Drive, I'm in the little cul-de-sac. I've known them for about six years, our children are friends, I've seen the chickens, they're in a really nice little house, they have their own little chicken run. I feel that letting them keep them is great for the kids because it teaches them responsibilities, they get fresh eggs, we all know the cost of eggs are ridiculous right now. They're also natural pest control, they help with insects and other pests, they don't run wild in the neighborhood, you wouldn't even know that they were there. It also helps with waste. I mean, we constantly throw out food all the time that we don't eat, the chickens can certainly eat that, and being that I'm younger and our community is a lot older, we have more younger generations moving into the neighborhood, and I would love to homestead in our area, I have a garden, if I could have chickens, I totally would. If I could have a house in the neighborhood, if I lived next door to chickens, I think that'd be the coolest thing ever.
Thank you very much.
Good idea.
Appreciate it. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Joanna Viverito, and I own two properties on Argus Drive, and
The numbers of those?
169 Argus and 228 Argus.
Thank you.
Um, with every passing month, we are experiencing more and more displaced wildlife, and I can't help but think adding chickens to the mix is just gonna exasperate this problem. I understand wanting to have the country life, but if you wanna have the country life, you should maybe think about living somewhere other than the suburbs. That's what I have to say on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this?
I'm Sue Iler, E-I-C-H-L-E-R, I live at 139 Darwin Drive, right next door, excuse me.
Thank you.
I vote no on the chickens, it's a quality of life issue for me, they smell, and sir, it might be cleaned up real nice today, but I don't believe they'll keep after it. I just don't think it's possible for them to clean it up enough to prevent the rats, and I, that's my world back there. I vote no. Thanks.
I'm sorry, miss, just a quick question, have you, as of yet, smelled?
Yes, I have, but I mean, I cut the lawn back there and you whip by, and urine, it's urine, have you ever smelled chicken urine? It's nasty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Carl, my name's Carl Toles, I live at 127 Darwin.
Okay.
Uh, right next door to these people here. So far, I haven't really seen a problem with them, I mean, they keep up on them, it's been good for the kids, they're not really bothering me any, I mean, even though I can walk out my door and they're, they're right there, and I don't smell anything, but maybe it's my sniffer.
Thank you, sir. Any further members of the public would like to speak on this? Um, so with that
Did you go through the criteria yet?
No, but I was asking what, should put your reads or all this stuff? Like, all these questions? Asking, because there's a few pages
Yeah, read through the questions, make the record.
Okay. So, as part of the application for non-domesticated animal questionnaire that the applicant filled out, there were several questions asked, I'm just gonna read through the questions and the answers that were provided. So it says, "New application for non-domesticated animals. State the type and total number of non-domesticated animals desired." The applicant wrote chickens, five hens. It says, "Set back inside your requirements set forth at 260-14, state that in every case, non-domesticated animal enclosures shall be located at least 15 feet from any property line." And the question is, "What type and size of pens, coop, or housing for each animal, and how far from the property?" It is a four-by-eight coop, the applicant says, and that is 17 feet from the property line. It asks, "Will the enclosures be cleaned daily and kept in a sanitary condition?" The applicant says yes. Next question is, "What plan do you have in place for storage of animal feed?" The applicant said, "Metal container in garage." The next question is, "Are there more than two square feet of floor space per bird in each coop, and is there adequate space to enter for cleaning and to collect eggs?" The applicant said yes. Next question, "Are pen, coop, or house screened from public view?" And the applicant said yes. "Are animals always confined within a fenced area on the property?" The applicant said yes. "Do you plan to sell any byproducts from the NDAs, non-domesticated animals?" The applicant said no. Says, "Waste must not be composted or mulched on site, all waste must be kept in appropriate sealed medical, metal containers until it can be removed from the property in the weekly garbage pickup." The questions under that category are, "Will animal waste be composted or mulched on site?" The answer given was no. "Will animal waste be kept in an appropriate metal sealed container?" The answer given was yes. So with all of that stated Yes?
I'm sorry, but we skipped over the part that says the applicant must provide proof that this being notified in writing, all property owners within 100 feet of the applicant's property that the applicant has applied for
Excuse me, sir, sir, there's a time for public concerns and comments, what we're doing right now procedurally is reading through the criteria the board considers. You raised your issue about adequate notice, however, you are present here. You did receive notice, not through the means that you've identified, but you did nonetheless receive notice and are present here. All we're doing is going through the criteria we're required to go through, and there's, unless someone sends us a letter and says they weren't notified, we won't know. Certainly, that would be something to raise after the fact if you didn't get adequate notice of the proceeding, but administratively, I don't think there's any way for Mr. Delaney to go through that right now. Certainly, we can consider adding that to the form, this is a newer law, we appreciate that you've raised that, but we are going to proceed as is with him reading the criteria.
I understand that, but it says that he has to provide proof that I was notified, that's in here, it's in highlighted in red.
Okay, and we appreciate that you have noted that to us.
And, I mean, let it be noted for the record that that is the case. So, that being said, would one of my fellow board members like to put forth a motion to grant or deny this variance as presented?
I'll make the proposal to grant the permit.
Proposal to grant made by member Sprata, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by member Menard, we have a roll call vote, please.
Member Galivan? Member Sprata?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Overholt? Acting Chairman Delaney?
Yes. Votes three to zero in favor of approving the variance as presented. Variance is approved. Motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion, we close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing, member Sprata, second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by member Menard, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing's closed.